It is February 3rd, 2022, and I'm called as Lacey City Council meeting to order. And we'll get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public.
Which stands under God's nation.
Under God.
Justice for all.
Amen. So we do have a couple of changes to the agenda today. Under, we are not going to be talking about the Christmas tree pickup. There was a scheduling conflict there. Under, just, just to make sure everyone knows, we are going to do the public hearing for the Tommy Park Estates under public hearings. And then with, after the public, conduct the public hearing under 10 ordinances. Then we will, we will look at ordinance at that time. And then there's been some changes to the wording of our Black History Month. And so that's been included as well. But given that, can I get a motion to approve that amended agenda as I just stated?
Move to approve the amended agenda?
It is second. A move by council member Conkold and signed it by council member Stedman. Is there any discussion? Seeing them all in favor of that motion, signify by saying a "aye".
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? And that motion now she carries. And we have an approved, our amended agenda and our consent agenda items. So we do have a couple of people who've signed up for public comments. Let's see if we can bring in the first person, which is Holly Paxton.
You're on mute, Holly.
Got it. Thank you very much. Good evening, good evening, council members. My name is Holly Paxton. I'm the library manager for the Lacey Timberland Library at 500 College Street Southeast. Here in Lacey, next door to City Hall. And the library manager for the soon to be open Hawks Prairie Timberland Library, which is located at 8205 Martin Way East. Suite B in the grocery outlet shopping center, the Hawks Prairie Shopping Center at the corner of Marvin and Martin. I'm here today to cordially invite the council and anyone watching to attend our grand opening of the Hawks Prairie Timberland Library, which will be held on Friday, February 18th at 10 a.m. We are very happy that Mayor Ryder is able to make it. He will be sharing some comments along with our TRL executive staff. We will have some special giveaways after the ribbon cutting. While supplies last, the library will be open from 10 a.m. till 6 p.m. that day. And then we will be open for our regular hours. The hours at Hawks Prairie Timberland Library will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, 11 a.m. to 7 p.m. Fridays and Saturdays, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. and closed on Sundays and Mondays. This, similar to our new West Olympia location, our services at this location include not only book and movie checkouts, computer use, printing, scanning, faxing and free wifi. But many of the titles available at this location are from our Lucky Day collection. If you find it on the shelf, you can check it out right then. It's your lucky day. These are our popular materials items that many, many times have very long waiting lists. But if you find it, and when you come into the library, you may check it out, skip the line and enjoy that item yourself. All of the collection in this new location is brand new. And we are very much looking forward to opening to the public and providing an additional location in eastern Lacey and Thurston County area. The grand opening will be held outdoors, just outside the entrance. We'll have the area toned off there. And if you are planning to visit the library, please don't forget your face covering. We do require masks upon entrance when we're in the facility. Are there any questions that anyone I can answer for, for anyone around the council?
Questions? Wait, miss him?
It's exciting.
Did I miss the time on the 18?
10 a.m. on Friday, the 18th. Yes, pretty much right at opening. And this is very exciting for us. This has been a 10 year, I've been here 10 years and we started talking about this 10 years ago. So it's very exciting to have this happen now. Councilmember Conkold.
Would you mind repeating the address for the new location?
Of course. It is at 8205 Martin Way East, Suite B, Lacey, Washington, 98516. For those of you that have lived here for a while, it is indeed in the old state liquor store. It is appropriate to say we have gone from booze to books. And I think we've all agree that this is a wonderful improvement for the area. Particularly since that area had that particular storefront has been vacant for the past four years. So we're very excited to be moving in. The corner of Marvin and Martin in the grocery outlet shopping center. This location is right next to the AT&amp;T store, right across from the Jack in the Box there.
Great, thank you. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you so much.
And next person who's signed up for public comment is Jenny Kessler. Bring Jenny in. Good, Jenny, if you can take yourself off mute, yeah?
There you go. Sorry, I wasn't sure where all the buttons were. And obviously, I don't know how my iPad is situated either. So you can't even see me. You can see the ceiling now. Thank you for your time. I haven't attended a meeting lately and because I still want to be the change that I want to see in the city of Lacey and Olympia. I'm here again to just bring up the dismay of our area and how disappointing it is to see the trash and drive along I-5 and have relatives visit at Christmas time and say, what is this? Didn't, wasn't it used to keep Washington green? Didn't that used to be our slogan? I don't know, I'm a military wife now, going on my 11th year here. And it, we, it just keeps getting worse. And I'm, I'm speaking for so many people that are tired of getting up and looking on next door and seeing whose car was stolen out of their driveway in Edgewater last night. And you know, whose catalytic converter is missing and who's had theft. And I, I just want to implore on you, and it does start small. It starts with the city of Lacey, representing the state of Washington and parts of it that are so ugly now. And I'm, it's so disappointing. And I think the last thing I just want to say is, I want you all to like, I want to live by rules that apply to everyone. I want it to like, I can't defecate in my front yard and leave trash and have tents. That's not allowed. But yet it is in so many other places. And I know I've heard multiple times that you guys are trying to work in a coalition with Olympia. So just to finish up, I, we're not there yet. There's still so much to be, to be done. I assume that you are trying. I want to believe that everyone is trying. But the visual result isn't there yet. I want to drive down I-5 in our corridor of Lacey to Olympia and not be disgusted. And right now, so many of us are publicly stating on next door and other places, we're disgusted. And that's not where I want to live. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And I think that is the last person who did sign up for public comment. And we also, we didn't receive any written public comments today. And so with that, we'll go on to our, our public hearing. I'll often turn this over to Peter Brooks and we'll let him give us some background. And I'll open up the public hearing. And so far, I haven't seen anyone who's signed up, but I'll, I'll make a mention at the time when, when Peter is finished. Bring in Peter now. We can't hear, we can't hear anything, Peter, but we can see your.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, now we can.
All right, let me turn on my video. There you go. There you go. And can you see my screen?
Yep.
Very good.
We can see your entire screen, so if you just enlarge just your. It's not the end of the world, please just see that. There you go.
Good. Okay, so tonight we have a formation hearing for what would be if it's formed U-Lid 25. This is a local improvement district for providing sewer to Tommy Park Estates neighborhood. So a little quick background here. Tommy Park Estates is a 47 parcel neighborhood that served by a large onsite septic system. Sometimes referred to as a LOS or loss. The loss is failing. It's contaminating surface water and shallow groundwater that is in the Eagle Creek Basin, which then flows to Henderson Inlet and Puget Sound. The system's contract operator wants to see the neighborhood connected to Lacey Sewer before he retires. This is a map of the area. This is the inset here. And with the inset, you can see the little odd shape is the boundaries of the proposed U-Lid. Down here in the lower corner is a little piece of I-5, kind of give you some orientation. Here's Marvin Road, Britton Parkway. Over here is the blow up of it. There's parcel numbers. I don't know how well people can see that on screen, but we have the parcel numbers in there. And it does not include these parcels right here or these up in the corner because they are not connected to the large onsite system. However, at least this one right here and these four duplex parcels here could connect to the line if this project is constructed. History of where we have been to gets us to tonight. Back in July, there was a presentation to the city council about the problem and the possibility of setting up a utility local improvement district. And the city council at that time pledged $2 million of the approximately $3 million project cost if the neighborhood connected to Lacey Sewer. And the city's interest was protecting surface water and shallow groundwater. Then in September, a presentation, virtual presentation, because we're in the Delta wave of COVID at that time. So we did a virtual presentation to the Tommy Park Estates homeowners. And we explained to them how a U-Lid works, how it could be used as a financing tool for the project. And just basically where the project's going to be, how it would work. On the heels of that, then in the month of October, petitions were circulated. And the idea behind the petition wasn't that we were going to form the district by petition, which is one way that state law allows for a U-Lid to be formed. Instead, it was simply to get a feel for the amount of support amongst the homeowners association membership. And what we came back with the results was at least 76% of parcels approved of moving forward with forming the U-Lid. So fairly good support. In November, there was a presentation to the utilities committee advising them of the petition and all the steps we've taken thus far. And the utilities committee said, sounds good, let's move it forward to the full council. Then last month, on the 6th, January, Resolution 1114 was passed by the council. And it sets the date of tonight for the formation hearing for Tommy Park Estates. So the whole law in this works is RCW 3543140 puts forth the process of how to form a U-Lid by the resolution process. So the resolution, which the city council passed in beginning of January, it declares the city's intent to order the improvement. It sets forth the nature and extent of the improvement. So that's basically the boundary of the district. It contains a statement that the actual assessments may vary from the assessment estimates, so long as they do not exceed a figure equal to the increased true and fair value of the improvement adds to that property. And you notify all people who may desire to object to the formation U-Lid to present their objections at a fixed time. That fixed time is tonight. People had opportunity also by written comments up until this afternoon at 4:00. No written comments were provided. So if anyone has comments, it would have to be at this hearing at this time. Letters were placed in the mail on January 18th. This is again the notification step in the previous slide on the law. So letters were placed in the mail notifying parcel owners within the boundaries of the U-Lid. So they could, the enclosures with that letter were the district boundaries. The preliminary parcel cost, which is $23,102. And it's an estimate, don't let the precision in the number fool you, but that's ballpark where we think it'll come out, probably on the high end. That final estimates could be different, that statement that we were supposed to include according to the law. Their right to provide comments for against the formation of the U-Lid. And also the date and a link to this very meeting where they could provide testimony. Also, along with this, the law requires public notice, not in the sense of the letters, which is more specific, but just general public notice. And the city clerk published on two successive weeks, all this information in the newspaper of record. So this has been notified to the public if they care to speak up one way or another about the formation of the U-Lid. Another legislative requirement gets into just the process of what we're doing here. The local improvement may be ordered only by an ordinance of the city or council pursuant to either a resolution or a petition. So we're doing the resolution method. The ordinance, then once you've done the resolution, which you did back in January, the ordinance then has to receive an affirmative vote of at least the majority of the members of the council. So being a seven-member council, at least four of you have to approve this in order for it to be formed. After tonight's hearing, the city council will consider ordinance 1613, the purpose of which is to form U-Lid 25 or Tommy Park Estates Sewer. Our staff recommendation is to approve it. We think there's good support unless we hear something different at the hearing. It's a necessary improvement. Their large onsite system is failing. So that is what I have. Anyone has any questions on the history of it, what the project will do, the process we're going through? If, if you do good, if not, then I guess the mayor can call the hearing to order.
Can you stop sharing your screen real quick so I can see everyone?
Yep. Yep.
First, um, I'm going to open this uh, public hearing. On uh, the Tony Park Estates Ulid twenty-five, so that uh, is now open. Any comments from the council? Questions from the council? Seeing none, we've been briefed on this, so this is not coming as a surprise. Um, is there anyone from the public um, who's wishing to testify? On this Ulid. If there is, can you please uh, use the raise hand function on Zoom? And we'll call, call you if you want to testify. Give a couple seconds. I don't see anything. John, do you see anything?
I've not seen anyone with a raised hand.
Okay. Well, um.
Tell people how to raise their hands, just in case.
There's a, John, can you tell them how to do that?
Yeah, there should be a raise hand button at the bottom of the Zoom interface. Uh, if you click on that, it'll put your hand up and we'll, we'll see that and and uh, call you to testify.
Give it another couple seconds. Just try to be as thorough as possible here.
Mister Mayor, if I may, uh, since we're dealing with technology. Is there a phone number that a member of the public can call if they're having trouble navigating Zoom?
Is there a, is there a number that can call in, John?
Uh, yes, they can call me at three six oh, four eight six, eight seven zero nine.
Okay, so that number's out there. I'll tell you what, if we're gonna do a proclamation after this and I close this public hearing, but before we do the ordinance, I'm gonna check back in with John real quick. As well, um, and if there's someone, I will open back and up that public hearing and we'll get, get you at that time, just to be safe. The the only, I guess, question I've had, and I, I know I, I brought this up. Um, during the update when we were giving this, obviously, this is outside of our urban growth. But outside of our city limits, right? Is there, is there a plan to bring them into our city limits at at some point? Um, hopefully soon. It's usually, it's our, it is our policy that usually we don't provide, extend services. Until they come into this city. I know this is a somewhat unique circumstance, um, because they have a failing system. We need to address it. As soon as possible. Have they at least signed a, a um. Letter, you know, their, their rights or whatever that's called, so uh, we can bring them into city when, when it's prudent to do that?
So because uh, this is not formed yet, we have not taken those steps. If council chooses to form the district, the next step would be design for the balance of this year. And during that time, we will reach out to all the parcel owners who will benefit from this, be connected, be part of the Ulid. And we'll start the process of having them sign the um, waiver of annexation. It's. I have Dale tell me it's actually called a little bit different.
Power of attorney. That's it.
Power of attorney, right. Allows the public works director to vote as a proxy for them and then he'll vote to bring them into the city. So we'll, we'll do that during, during that period of time.
Cuz I, I would like that to happen as part. I mean, uh, we're, we're just giving a million dollars to, to this. Very understandable, um, des- deservedly so. Um, they have a failing system. This is a big system. Um, you know, but, you know, I would like them to come into the city. As as a part of that a- as as well and go through that process. And so I know there's a process in place. I'm just saying it for the record. Uh, and should come to no surprise that I'm stating it for the record that I'd like to see them come into our city. So. With that, is there any other questions? Okay, then I'm going to close this public hearing on this U, uh, on the Tony Park Estates Ulid twenty-five. And we'll go on to our next agenda item, um, which is a Black History Month proclamation. And uh, there's a quite few people that are gonna come in. And so, John, if you can start bringing all those people in um, for that. Um, and as those people are coming in. As, as I, I mentioned that everyone should have received their assignments on when they're gonna read the, their lines in the proclamation. And just as a reminder, um, since Councilman for Greenstone had an emergency, couldn't make it here tonight, that uh, Deputy Mayor is gonna read. His um, his line and, and then your scheduled line as well. So with that. I'll get started. City of Lacey official proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month. The many achievements and contributions made by Black and African-Americans to our economy. Economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development are celebrated. And.
Whereas in nineteen fifteen, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher. Founded the Association for Study of African, African-American Life and History. And initiated Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six. Selecting the month of February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And in nineteen seventy-six, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of blacks in American history and beyond. Advance the cause of civil rights and strengthen families, communities, and the nation. And.
Whereas the first enslaved Africans were brought to the Americas four hundred and two years ago. Marking the beginning of legalized slavery, which continued with the founding of the United States of America. And was legal in the country until the ratification of the thirteenth amendment in eighteen sixty-five. And.
Whereas the abolishment of slavery. Many iterations of racist laws and policies were instituted across the country. That served to disenfranchise blacks and African-Americans from full political, economic, educational. And social opportunities. And.
Whereas in spite of these abortive uh, attempts to enslave and then exclude them as a result of their. Determinate, determination, hard work, and preservation of pres- preserv- perseverance. Blacks have made invaluable and lasting contributions to our community. The state, the nation, and the world achieving exceptional success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics. Science, medicine, the military, sports, and the arts. And whereas the Association of Study, the, the Association for the Study of African Life and History. In history's two thousand twenty-two, theme is black health and wellness.
Whereas the city, the Lacey City Council is committed to creating a community where all who come here can feel safe and welcome. And that the observance of Black History Month calls our city's attention to the continued need to dismantle racism and to build a society that lives up. To its democratic ideals.
Now therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey. On behalf of Lacey City Council, hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in the City of Lacey. And I urge all community members to recognize the continued need to dismantle racism. And to build a society that's more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, this date, February third, twenty twenty-two. And to accept this uh, proclamation, um, is, is Hank. And Hank, are you here?
Yeah, this is Hank Shigaw. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you. The floor is yours.
Yeah, my worship master told me to give a brief presentation on Black History Month, but uh. I didn't know exactly how much time that I have, so I put something together. It'd probably take eight to ten minutes. Would that be okay?
I, I think that's um, okay. We, I'm not sure if we are, do you have the ability to share your screen and all that?
No, I can't. I, I uh, I wasn't aware of this situation uh, at the time when I put it together, but you can hear it.
So you, you know what? What I think would be great is that if we can bring you back at um, you know, our next council meeting. And have this set up and ready to go, so we, we can work with you a little bit better, so you can do a full um, presentation. I think, I, I think that would be great. Um, so we'll, we'll work with you and um, set up that presentation. It'll be, it'll still be in February, so we'll, we'll still be all good. Um, but we'll be able to work with you and, and get that set up, so we're not scrambling for the last second. Is that? Like a plan? Is there anything else you'd like to say in accepting this proclamation? Or is there anyone from um, in, in attendance that I, that we brought in? If you just want to um. Raise your hand, uh, if possible, John can also bring you in and you can say a few words if you'd like. Let's see everyone here. Do we see anyone, John?
Melvin Butler.
Okay, let's bring on in.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, worshipful master Melvin Butler from Fred U. Harris Lodge, number seventy. First of all, I thank you all for this proclamation. Um, you would love to hear one of my grand, past grand master, uh, Hank Shigaw and his report. You would love it cuz the man is very professional. Um, on behalf of Fred U. Harris Lodge, thank you for this proclamation. I know this is the first year, but. My lodge, and I have members here, my lodge's been doing this for forty-one years. And that's a lot of history. Uh, we go back to different parks. We're all over and, and no one. Didn't recognize us, but we just ke- kept going and going. And guess what? We finally here. So I, on behalf of Fred U. Harris Lodge. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate you. Thank you. That's all.
And uh, we look forward to hearing the presentation, uh, our next council meeting. Is there anyone else wishing to say a few words?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is Melvin. I don't know if my worshipful grand master um, is on here. Uh, he may like to have something to say.
Well, if anyone wants to say something, um, please raise your hand and we'll bring you on.
Yo, McLaren has their hand raised.
Right. He is on his way, uh, in.
Go ahead and uh, unmute yourself and you can turn on your video. Can you, can you hear you a little bit? Go ahead and speak up.
I wanna make sure you're referring to me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Sorry about that. I, uh, for me to rejoin, I went out and I, I thought I was lost, but I'm. My way back. So, thank you. And I just wanna say, uh. Uh, I wanna thank the uh, council for listening and considering what Fred U. Harris have been doing for many, many years. Uh, Fred U. Harris is one of our, our mainstays as it comes to Masonry. Uh, I, I personally don't live in the area, but uh, I, I, I was invited to uh, listen to. What they've done and what they have accomplished. And more often, I think, uh, a few years ago, before the pandemic struck, uh, we used to have our grand session. Uh, down, down, down that way, uh, at the uh, I don't, I'm not real familiar, but at the Hotel RL. And so, uh, I just wanna say that, uh. That I appreciate Fred U. Harris's work, uh, as a grand lodge, the most worshipful Prince Hall Grand Lodge is connected throughout. We basically are on military bases, wherever you can find military bases. That includes Japan, Germany, uh, all over the Washington State, of course, uh. I'm, I'm personally right now in Oak Harbor, Washington. Uh, so I'm, I'm kind of a, I'm including on y'all's city council. It's okay, y'all, y'all sitting on a fine job. So I just thank everyone for the invite. I thank the brothers for the work that they do. Here. And uh, that's pretty much it. It's a credit to our organization and I just thank them so very much. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Of course, thank you. And is there any else wishing to speak? And I, like I said, uh, John, let's, let's reach, reach out to um, Hank and we'll set something up for our next council meeting, so we're, we're ready to go. If there's a, if there's a presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Gilbert, do you want to say something?
Uh, I found the video button.
Okay, found it. Well, thank, thank you for joining us and I'm sure you're doing great work up there. And I'll cover this. We have some, you know, good people up there for sure, so I appreciate you. Uh, to join us today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. We'll see ya.
All right.
So uh, next, we're uh, under ordinance, uh, ordinance number. Sixteen thirteen, the Tony Park Estates Ulid twenty-five. You want to add anything, Dave?
Well, I had a, just a, yeah, I guess I do wanna add something, Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, this, as you know, follows up on the public hearing that council just conducted. Um, I'm just gonna recap quickly what council's considered already, which was the resolution um, one-one-one-four, which was passed on January sixth. That declared council's intent to create the uh, it, the sewer line, the construction and installation of the sewer line. Creating Ulid twenty-five. And that resolution set the public hearing for today. That notice, as Peter Brooken, Brooks indicated, was properly published and mailed. Um, that hearing was held, although no one spoke. Um, all the property owners and affected. Um, residents were, provided the opportunity to object and or voice support. And uh, and so now council should consider the improvements and determine whether to order the construction and installation. Of the improvements. Um, I think council understands that adoption of ordinance sixteen thirteen will create. Tony Park Estates, uh, Utility Local Improvement District number twenty-five. And as Peter indicated, it is staff's recommendation for council to adopt ordinance sixteen thirteen. So with that.
You know, checking in with John real quick. One more time, is there anyone else who, uh, trying to get ahold of us who hadn't had a chance to testify?
Uh, we have not received any communication from any of, from the public.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion? We did it again. I second. Great. It's been, it's been moved by councilmember Kunkel and seconded by Councilmember Stidman to. Approve ordinance sixteen thirteen, which will create the Tony Park Estates Ulid twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Is there anyone opposed? In that motion unanimously carries. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
So uh, next up, uh, under the mayor's report, I just want to say it's. Boy, it's been a busy time of the year and, and there's just so much going on right now. Um, feels like so much is, is on my plate. Uh, and I know it's, there's so much on all of our plates. I just want to just, uh, give us all a, a reminder to. Make sure that we're taking care of ourselves, right? If we, we're not taking care of ourselves, we can't take care of the, the work of the people here in Lacey. And uh, I know it's sometimes it's tough to remember to do that, uh, but uh, I think it's important now more than ever. We're at the end of a long, two-year, uh, you know, uh, pandemic that has really taken a lot out, all in our community. Um, and so I just, just a quick reminder to, um, you know, hang in there and, and never. Um, hesitate to ask for help, um, cuz it's always important to, to make sure you're getting the help that you need. Whether it's from, from me or it's from staff, or it's from your family, where, you know, so be it. Um, I think always make sure you're asking for help and take care of yourself. So it's really important. There's obviously been a lot going on, uh, this week in particular, where the North Christian Public Schools and. My heart goes out to everyone involved in, and that's the circumstance. And I, I hope that we can find peace and resolution. To, to what's going on and um, I'm, hopefully can, will help in any way I possibly can in that circumstance. And I know the, the mayor's been, um, involved in that as well. And uh, thank you for, for your leadership with that as well. Um, and I just, I'm about. And I just, I'm about ready to go into a really busy stretch as I know we haven't talked about this too much at the council level. But the Lacey Community Foundation, where I'm in the midst of trying to get that off the ground. And it's really the first lady, my, my wife Becky, who's been putting in all the hard work to lay the groundwork to, to talk about the Lacey Community Foundation. And I'm in, have a series of meetings that are, are being set up right now, where I'm going to be talking to community leaders and businesses. And then talking about the community foundation. I will hope to bring back a quick presentation to, to this council about the Lacey Community Foundation, just so everyone is aware of it. And, and hopefully, you know, you learn a little bit more about it and tell your, tell your friends and tell your community members as well about what the Lacey Community Foundation is trying to do, which is to make a better quality of life here in Lacey for everyone who lives here, visits here, all the employees that live here and work here. And so it's, it's a, it's a really exciting time, a lot of work. But, you know, it's, I think it's really important that we, as the largest city in Person County, have a, that foundation, which we've never had before, that will continue to support what we're doing here from the city government standpoint as well. So that is my report and I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager for your city manager's report.
Thank you. Oh, Mayor and City Council, I have two items and a house. So I have some reports on some internal local agreements. The first item is the Great Cuyahoga Parks and Greenways Master Plan and Jen Burbage will provide that update.
Well, good evening, everybody. I've got a couple more people joining us. So we'll need Juliette and Merritt. There she is. And Ashley. Great. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Miller, Lacey City Council members and members of the public. Scott said, I'm Jen Burbage, Director of Parks, Culture and Recreation, and we are happy to be bringing the final draft of the Great Cuyahoga Park and Greenways Master Plan before you for final approval tonight. As you know, this is a long awaited, long-term planning project and it's exciting to be at this stage finally. We would have hoped to be here last year at this time, but right when we were planning to get started in twenty twenty on the year-long plus project, the pandemic hit and things got put on hold, priorities got shuffled around, as you know. But we are here tonight and we're excited to be, to be here at this stage. It was really important to me to have the core planning team all here tonight. We've got Merritt O'Vier from HBV Landscape Architects. And you know Juliette Vong from HBV as well. You all know Ashley Smith from our Public Works Department. She's our Capital Projects Engineer and I really want to sincerely thank Ashley, Merritt and Juliette for all of their efforts in getting the master plan to this point. It's been a heavy lift and a lot of fun as well, but I just so appreciate their efforts. They've done amazing work with the community and with city staff and it's just been a real pleasure working with them. Juliette is going to provide the presentation tonight, but I have just a couple of quick things. Of course I do. I just have to highlight some of the benefits of the project, which are providing public access to public lands. In doing so, we are fulfilling our obligation for our Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office past grant. We are providing protection of natural areas while identifying and balancing recreation opportunities. At the same time, we are recognizing that city parks play a vital role in the social, economic and physical well-being of Lacey residents. And we are further identifying Lacey as a unique location to visit. And the last thing is I just want to express my appreciation to the community and all the stakeholders who have weighed in on this project. They've been interested and involved and have given thoughtful consideration to this project. I want to make sure anybody who is viewing from the public, that they know who might be interested, that we really appreciate them being involved. And also, if you missed the January thirteenth city council work session, you can see that on Facebook. Our Public Affairs Department was going to post that for reference. I also want to thank city staff for giving so much thought and insights and attention to this project. So my department, of course, Parks, Culture and Recreation, but also our amazing community and economic development staff, our Public Works Department in so many different ways, also Police Department for providing feedback and guidance. And of course, we could not have pulled off all the outreach and public meetings without our amazing Public Affairs staff. So definitely want to just make sure everybody hears that appreciation and with that, I will turn it over to Juliette.
Thank you. It is nice to be here again and super excited to share our final master plan with you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and start the full screen mode. So if I can just get a quick confirmation that everyone can see my screen, okay?
It's loading. There you go.
All right. Hopefully it's not going to be too slow. I believe everyone's going to be pretty familiar with these slides by now. So as we've been doing in the past, I'm going to flip through them fairly quickly. Again, we keep everything in here so that we have a good record for anyone who has not been part of conversations to date and wants to look at this final presentation. We've got the same elements that you have seen before. We do have a little bit more detail in the next steps to talk about, so I'll pause there. I cannot see hands raised while I'm presenting, at least not very easily. And so if you do want me to stop or have questions or comments, please speak up. And Jen, I know will help facilitate that if she sees anything. Let's see, we'll move some bubbles here. All right. So where we're at in the world, everyone's familiar now with Great Cuyahoga Park and Greenways and its location in the city off of Carpenter Road. We have a number of different parcels that are part of this presentation and part of this process. We had an extensive shoreline and environmental analysis, a lot of work done boots on the ground in a lot of the areas, but not all of the areas. So as we get into next steps, we can talk a little bit more about what that might mean. But a lot of analysis that formed a very strong basis for the presentation and the final master plans or goals and visions, as we've discussed them and a strong community outreach, as Jen mentioned. A lot of people really providing comment and feedback. Not everybody agreeing, which you can imagine is fairly typical in a master plan process. But I think what has been really rewarding as part of this project is just for those who maybe weren't agreed, maybe weren't a hundred percent thrilled with where all of the final elements resulted from. We actually still got some great feedback that said, well, I don't fully agree with this because I'm still concerned about traffic or still concerned about X, Y, Z. It's been a great process and just a really appreciative community as they've gone through this. The final master plan, these elements are core to the principle. We have the yellow area, which we refer to as our core area in the park, predominantly in the open meadow. So we preserve a lot of that natural habitat with the disc golf carrying coming through. We've added a few slides in here to identify the different map zones. So as we zoom in and show different areas at a greater scale, so you can see the detail to try and help orient people with where you are at on the master plan. And so we have both the zones that are central and then these larger zones for some of the trails and the outline quadrants. Primary access off of Carpenter Road, our primary trail system that is intended to be a little larger, a little bit more accessible to the extent we can, but not necessarily all paved. It would also be the primary route to support maintenance and then secondary access points and the mountain bike trail as part of that overall trail system. Our core area, as you come off of Carpenter Road with the primary parking spaces, the dog park and the disc golf to the north of that off in this area and then play area, demonstration gardens, food forest, right, you know, other kind of more park-like elements on the south end of that. And then of course, connections to the overall trail system. The maintenance facility to support both the short and long-term maintenance as this park develops over time is just across the street in Carpenter. So it has its own access and its own secure space. Education's been a big component of this all throughout the process. So as you kind of go beyond that core area, we were just looking at the access drive would continue into a new indoor facility. So this would be a smaller community event space. And then ultimately, the long-term, if there's a partner available, a larger environmental learning center with some learning loops and nature play and other things that could be developed as part of that. Over in Pleasant Glade Park, we have a series of improvements. The parking was key to pull it off the road to help preserve that neighborhood character off of Pleasant Glade Road. That was important to the community, having its own loop path, a small playground, picnic areas. So it still had a lot of very park-like opportunities. And then this is of course also where the expansion of disc golf occurs. We're familiar with the examples of the different elements and just photos, examples of what those could look like over time. Palm Creek Headwaters is one of our secondary access points. Again, a lot of concern with parking stalls, number of parking stalls, maintenance and access. All that would need to get developed over time. As I mentioned, we had a lot of boots on the ground, but as you think of these secondary access areas and the detailed systems that would go into place with them, a lot more on-the-ground work would need to be occurred. So that is one of the reasons why it's not as high up potentially in the priority. And we've talked to the community about this is not going to be the first thing that we're going to be focusing on to try and build. Those initial improvements are focused on the core area. Another access point off of Southeast Avenue Extension or sorry, Thirty-first Avenue Extension and the trail systems that support and interconnect throughout the various quadrants of the park. Phase one is what we are looking at in this core area. So this is defined by this area in yellow that we're trying to propose and includes primarily the disc golf trail, disc golf course, the trails themselves, some amount of parking, open space and depending on and the off-leash area. Within that phase one, we've split it into two smaller phases. We talked about this last time as well, that there's a minimum improvements, kind of looking at budget between three to five million. And then the rest of the core area identified here is a much larger take. That's one of the, some of the drivers of that is of course the rest of the trail system in here, but also utilities, maintenance, things that really kick in, much more substantial improvements as part of a development project that become much more extensive. So we have had some initial conversations with city staff just to try and continue to refine what we can do and what we need to do as part of those minimum improvements and those discussions will continue. And then you can see here the rest of the phases and some approximate budgets associated with those. Want to always follow up with the grant funding anticipated, looking at the grant process for this coming year as part of initial improvements, but also identifying grant opportunities for all of the various elements that have been proposed for the park. All right, our timeline, it's always fun to see that line move on. So we are nearing the end. Looking for approval of the master plan by city council tonight. And then some next steps. And I think this is where I'll pause just a little bit to walk through a couple of these steps. And Ashley, Jen, if there's any more detail you want to add, I think one of the, one of the comments that we heard from our last meeting is just a really strong desire to want to continue to the momentum. What is it going to take to get that first phase started? What is the process? What is the timeline? How quickly can we actually get to that initial groundbreaking? And so Ashley and Jen have been great, kind of really reaching out to the various departments to solidify and understand a little bit more what needs to be included in this initial phase. What's the process? What's a realistic timeline? So we don't come to you with a, yep, we can get this groundbreaking and, you know, in six months. And in reality, we really know we can't. So we wanted to be realistic, but also aggressive with that timeline to the extent we could. So what we're showing here is a timeline for that initial phase one A improvements. It is just really based on, you know, from the point we have the, the go, the notice to proceed, what is it going to take? And what are those key steps along the way? So we have the environmental process is a little bit more extensive. Because as I've said, we've done an analysis of the whole park system to some extent with boots on the ground. But where we're going to be doing site-specific improvements, we'll need to go in and actually define the exact edge of wetland and boundaries within those zones. So there's some time to get that happening and then following up with some survey, a design process that we can shrink to some extent, but also a permitting process that needs to occur. And then the city review process throughout that. So essentially what all that does is it brings us to, you know, basically a bid, a bid in advertising of that phase one at the end of twenty twenty-three, which is right when you want to be out to bid in those winter months, so that you can have your better bid prices and start your construction into the spring and early summer of twenty twenty-four. The other thing this did, as we look through this, there are of course always ways to try and shrink schedules and always unknowns that can extend those schedules. But we also wanted to highlight and align that schedule a little bit to that RCO grant application. The grant application starts kind of now, within the next month to get the application started, get the presentation materials developed, do presentations to RCO, which is the Recreation and Conservation Office. That's the state agency that funds a lot of parks for local communities. And then what happens is in October of the end of this year, you'll actually get a notice of ranking, which will give you an idea of how likely it is you will get funding in the following budget cycle. They then have, the legislature has to then approve that budget and approve that ranking. And then you actually get your grant award if you are funded towards the fall of the following year. Because it has to go through that legislative budgeting process. So the alignment of the schedule is both to allow the time to put some true analysis into the limits to work with a community group on trail location and disc golf, some time to have that process occur. The amount of time we're expecting, the reality of just permitting right now and then also trying to align it so that if we have the grant funding, we can use the grant as part of this initial process, which we can't spend the grant before. There's some timelines that are kind of critical to align in that area. Ashley, Jen, did I cover kind of the high points of this?
Yeah. Thank you so much. And then I will add that due to council's interest in getting started as soon as possible, what we would need is permission from the council to move forward with securing design services for phase one A. A budget amendment would be necessary and staff would be coming back to you within about a month for a bid award. And just to give you an idea of the cost, typically designed services are anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the construction cost. And so if you look at the phase one A on the prior slide, the cost being between three to five million. Yeah, if you want to go back, there you go, the, those minimal first improvements, three to five million. And then, so your design services would be twenty-five to thirty-five percent of construction cost.
So would you, would you like that be a part of the motion right now? Jen?
Sure.
All right. Are you done with your presentation?
I am. It is a good point. Thank you for reminding me to stop sharing.
With, with that, can I get a motion to approve the Great Cuyahoga Master Plan and the requested dollars for the, the beginning, was it first phase of this?
Phase one A.
I'll make the motion.
Please do.
There you go. There's my motion. Make Greg Cuyahoga Park happen.
Well, just to interject here, what, I think we're just trying to get authorization to move forward with the RFP process to get a consultant to do the design work. We will be coming back to you with a formal decision to award that bid.
Okay, but we, we're giving you the authorization to do that.
So then, one, you're approving the plan and then, two, you're authorizing to go forward with schematic design.
Motion does Ed Kunkel's motion. Councilor Cox second it. Is there any discussion? You know, one thing we haven't really, I'm sorry about jumping in here. One thing that we really discuss, when, when, when you look at the map, the Great Cuyahoga Park and you, especially even looking at this first phase and what's going to happen, there's, there's a significant portion of this park property that is outside of our urban growth area. It should come into the city of Lacey. Could you imagine having to deal with the county on permitting and everything else, workers enforcing our park standards and so on and so forth? What, what is the problem? Have we, have, in your entire time, have you considered change, what it'll take to change the urban growth boundary on this? And is that possibility? And what, how do we get started on that?
So that's not, that's not some discussion that I've been involved with. We might have to rely on our community and economic development folks to talk through the process on that. Scott, I don't know if you have any insights on that?
I'm just trying to verify. I thought most of it was within our city limits. You may recall, we did do an action to include a portion of it.
We, we annexed what we could, but there is a portion that's outside of our urban growth area. And so And so you, we have to go through a certain process to to adjust the boundaries and we have to. It's a, it's quite a process to to do that. You have to give a good reason. Rick, are you going to jump in here and?
Yeah, Rick's coming in right now.
You're on, you're on mute though.
That might be a good thing. Um well, the um so if I. Capture the conversation correctly, you're wondering, because of the Cuyo Park property, there's some of the ownership of of the city owns of the Cuyo Park property that's outside. Our growth area and in the rural lands. Um when we uh first bought that. Of course, all the, most of the property was outside our city limits. We annexed those portions of the property that's within our city limits into the city of Lacey. But we couldn't annex anything outside the growth area. In order to do so, we'd have to mend that growth area boundary, but that is a very long. And uh can be a tedious process. Um we'd have to go back through, uh working through our countywide planning policies. We'd have to work with um the cap, the board of county commissioners, show the justification for doing so. And then that would be assigned to a subcommittee of TRPC, who then review that and make ultimate recommendation. Uh but it is a long process and it can be a somewhat labor intensive.
So Rick, just to clarify, the, all the park property that's within our city limits and that was in our UGA has been now folded into our city limits. But there's still a portion that is outside of our urban growth area.
Correct.
It's a pretty big.
The other part of it too is there are time limitations of how many times you can amend your growth boundary. And then also too invites in a lot of scrutiny because that's something that's a big issue. Yeah, for organizations locally as well as across the state for what that means for projected uh growth and impacts to the rural area. So it is not necessarily a simple process.
I I agree with all that, and I know it could be a complicated process, especially if you're, you're trying to bring in property that's, that could be developed. All this property is park property, period, right? And so to have two different jurisdictions doesn't make any sense. And it'd be my recommendation that we at least start that process. I know it can be, you know, it 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 may take a little while, but I'm telling you what, we don't want to look back twenty years now, fifteen years now. And you're walking down a trail and all of a sudden you're in, you're, you're in the county. And if something happens, you gotta call the sheriff. I mean, th- that doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And so this is, I I think a pretty cut and dry. I know we went through the process of uh changing our our boundary uh for the North Houston Public School property.
That was the last time I I was through that process and it wasn't very straightforward. We have to make sure there's assurances about. How uh urban services would be provided, because again, each time you change it, you extend your infrastructure. And uh while it was successful, there was a lot of conversations in advance that in order to move that forward. Because that was talked about for several years before it got to momentum.
Sure.
Uh but we can map out that process and and talk about what that timing would look like and provide that at a later time to the council. And I know that we could, we could kind of look at that and uh even talk with some of our counterparts as well and kind of get a sense. And I believe a couple of our councilors have some questions.
Sure. I believe this is more straightforward than the last time we did the boundary line adjustment. We basically did that because the school purchased property outside of our urban growth area without really thinking about it. So this is, this is way more straightforward than that. And I think it should be pretty straightforward in the adjustment as well. We're, we're not bringing in any, any population or anything like that. So it's all, all park property.
But you still have to do the work and we have to program it in because we have a lot of different work that's, that's priority as well. So again. We got to figure out how to map that out and how long it would take us to get to it.
I I totally understand that. I just put, put it on radar. Uh Councilor Staden.
Thank you, Mayor. So point of clarification, so let's say the um, the draft bid comes back and it's double. It's six to ten million instead of three to five. We can then opt out, but then we're not paying also that thirty five percent of that inflated rate, right? We're, because right now it's three to five and so thirty five percent of that still seems a little steep, but but manageable. But if it comes back and it's six to ten, does that thirty five percent double too? That's my point of clarification.
Does not. Once, once you have a um uh, once you have a scope and a contract with a firm to continue the design. That scope gets a defined limit. If your bid comes in higher, it doesn't automatically change the limit of the design scope. Um there are things that you might decide to change, which would be a separate amendment process. So there's no automatic trigger in the relationship between those percentages.
Alright, thank you. I just wanted to be completely clear um with that um and transparent. Because you know, that that could be a huge difference and not people, you know, most people or many people aren't familiar with the process. I wa- I want to make sure that they're at ease with it.
Is it Councilor Miller? Do you have uh Deputy Mayor? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's uh Councilmember Vasquez.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez.
I just was curious if we select someone, a vendor to do the design for phase one A. Are we locked into using them for the design for the other phases? Is it cheaper to use the same firm to do the design for subsequent phases so that we don't have to go out and do another RFP? What does that look like for future phases?
I can speak to that if, okay. Um our intent is to move forward and negotiate a scope and fee with HBB Design Architecture. That, you know, they've led this process to this point, and we do have the ability with our original solicitation process that we went through for the master plan to. Continue services with them for this portion. Uh that scope would include, you know, full support through phase one A. For subsequent phases, we could use any firm of our choosing. We could uh contract with them again in the future or put out another RFQ for a different firm.
Is there any other questions? Councilor Cox?
Thank you, Mayor. So would there potentially be any other conflicts? Uh if we're trying to move forward and the county still owns a portion of the park land, is there, should they be involved in the conversation? In in planning, since technically they they own uh part of the park, is there going to be any conflict there?
Yeah, so um so the city does own the entire park. It's just falls, part of it falls within the city limit and part of it falls within the county limit. Uh which, you know, as you know, with the rack before we annexed the city annex to that, that was, you know, in the county, also portions of Lake Lewis Habitat Reserve. Um so uh so what would happen is that we would work with the counties. Well, first I'll say the county is a stakeholder and we um have given them opportunities to review the plan. And definitely have included them in the whole process so far. And then um secondly is that we would work with their planning. And Economic Development Department rather than our own um for a development project that would take place on those uh parcels.
Has there been any feedback at all uh from the county and what their concerns are or um? Or or as far as we know, the county's on board with this plan?
That's correct.
Yep, you've not received any.
Well, let's go to the Councilor.
You know, I, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Councilor Cox.
Well, um to your point, Mayor, and to Councilmember Conkles' point, I'm wondering whether. An interlocal agreement with the county might address some of the concerns in the near term. So that, you know, we, I'm, our staff is really overworked right now. And if we could have a less cumbersome process to satisfy those early concerns and then take our time on, on the other. Would that make sense?
That's a good idea.
Go ahead, Ashley. Did you want to sho- did you want to show them that?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all of Cuyo Park itself is in the city limits at this time. It's more the outlying future phases that are not part of the city's boundary.
They all phase one A is.
Phase one A, yes. And thank you, Ashley. I've been uh was going to interject that as well uh at some point here. All of the initial phase uh is within, but there is a county road still. There, there are some um county roads that we do need to still coordinate with. But the property that we would be developing is part of the city's limits.
Uh that's, that's good news then, because I I just imagine that some of it. Deal with, dealing with that on a, would be a pain.
I will say it doesn't affect your long-term discussion is still valid. It's just the short term is not as impacted.
Yes, it's very valid, Rick. It's very valid. Uh Councilor Staden.
So we won't have to go through community development and permit process through the county in phase one A.
That's correct.
Good. Because I mean, I I'm in the process myself with them o- over five years. And it's a first come, first serve. I mean, granted, they just opened up their offices probably a month ago to more than two days a week. At half days. Um that's not moving at the speed of business, let alone in anything. So that would be a huge concern for me with it. I mean, that would hold this sit, this development up big time.
I agree. Ashley?
Councilmember Seven to, to speak to your comment. Um we did bring the phase one A in front of. The um Community and Economic Development Department for a pre-submental application um and. Got feedback on the requirements that would be part of this phase. So that four to six month permitting timeline has been verified to be reasonable.
Okay, and that's only because of the roads?
Since the access roads were, yeah.
I, I don't understand your question.
No, the um within, it's within uh the, all of it falls, and I believe even Ashley, our, our entrance. Portion of the road that we would be putting still falls within the city of Lacey boundary. We deal with county as you get a little bit further down the road, but we are entirely contained for phase one A within the city.
That, that is correct. And so as this comes into a permitting process, it would go through and be fully within the city. Cities uh permitting review and processes, and we'd have outside agents coming, but not direct permitting.
Perfect. Is there any other discussion? Uh and it's been uh moved and second to uh adopt the Greg Cuo uh master plan. And uh authorize the city manager um to go forward with uh this first phase uh one A. All in fear of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion, you know, it carries. Thank you so much for all your work. I I went out in the community, people are really excited about this. I mean, this, I know this council's very excited about it. Uh but I think the, the general public is extremely excited about it. And you know, I, I know that we're all eager to get started on it too. We were, you know, I was, I was hoping we can start the, the first phase this year. And it's like, we, we're going to get started, but we're not going to, you know, see the vast majority of it. Till, till the next year, which is, you know, um unfortunate, because we've been so patiently waiting to see these uh improvements. But I know we'll, we'll go as quick as we can and we really look forward to it. Um I also hope that we can took a look at um a, you know, a, a financial plan for the future phases as well. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, Jen, but um I I hope you can get with, you know, the finance department and, and map out. What it's going to take to do the future phases as well, because as soon as we're done with one A, it'd be great to roll into, to the next phases. And I, you know, I'm pretty sure this council's all supportive of that as well. Councilor Seven?
I'll be real quick, Mayor. Just in this process, um you know, it's a great opportunity for the public to, to see how. We're spending their money and developing their park and creating a good quality of life after they get off work. They spend sixty five percent of their time or, or more. So, so when they're with their families, they can have, have a better quality of life. But having said that, consider, uh we, we should consider uh putting out the ballot, the uh Metropolitan Park District again. Because this park would have been developed by now if that had passed a couple of years ago. That's um.
Thank you. Thank you for your support about that. And I, I know we're going to hear a financial plan that does can come back towards us to develop our parks. So we'll, we'll, we're looking forward to that, hearing that too, Jen. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
The second. Yeah, second uh. Second item is uh Thurston County UC agreement for uh BIPOC training with EDC. Rick is going to start that off and then followed by Wesley.
Yes, uh thank you, Scott. And again, we're before you with a uh proposed budget amendment. And we're requesting the council to authorize that budget amendment to reallocate uh unspent front, unspent funds from the twenty twenty one. Scale-up contract to establish a BIPOC and veteran-focused business um startup training program. And authorize a city manager to enter into a contract with Thurston EDC to manage the BIPOC training program. So that's a very long and long-winded uh recommendation for a motion. The little bit of background is. The scale-up program's been traditionally a program funded by the US Small Business Administration for many years. And it provides opportunities for uh training and support for small businesses to uh, once they get established and starting to grow. Learn how to build their market and get business counseling. And that's usually been administered uh by the Thurston EDC. Back in twenty seventeen, the uh US Small Business Administration cut off funding to all the local um scale-up programs across the state. At that time, the council uh saw, seeing the need and the loss of that um resource, stepped up. And uh created a, a fund to fund scholarships for Lacey businesses to continue with the scale-up program administered by Thurston EDC. And that was where, that's first began our direct uh financial involvement in uh providing that service to our local businesses. And that's been very successful, and we've had a lot of Lacey businesses be able to go through that program. Uh then last year, beginning of last year, uh Department of Commerce uh received some dollars and they decided to fund all the local scale-up programs. So that made our scholarship uh efforts at thirty thousand dollars a year that the, the city contributed to Lacey businesses to fund them through the process. It made that unnecessary. So last year, we pivoted and adjusted and and created a different curriculum, working with the Thurston EDC staff. Uh develop a scale-up two hundred. And that's a necess- uh higher level course for those that have gone through the initial scale-up. That they can go on to the higher level course and continue to uh get resources, support and training to hone their business skills and, and manage their businesses. Well, going into, or coming out of this last year, um we had for the twenty twenty one budget allotment. We didn't have a lot of success in recruiting uh participants. And so we ended up uh having about twenty seven thousand dollars left of unspent scholarship funds. And we're still working on trying to identify what was the reason why we didn't have the, the um participation. But there's a lot of things going on, as we all know, due to pandemic fatigue, uh everything being done virtually. Uh then also people just maybe not be able to take time away from their businesses to keep uh the work going. Um so we're actually going to go continue with the scale-up two hundred series going in the next year and monitor, and then at the end of the year, reevaluate that program. But with those funds that we have from, remaining from twenty twenty one, we want to take a look and develop a, a different type of curriculum. A curriculum that's uh focused for small businesses related to the BIPOC and veterans services. And so we've been talking with Thurston EDC and they have started developing that curriculum and doing some initial outreach to gauge interest. And there seems to be a lot of interest in our uh local community for that type of opportunity. So here we are, are before you tonight. To um present that program and uh request the council to authorize that budget amendment. So we can um use those unspent uh funds from twenty twenty one to apply into this program in twenty twenty two and enter into that contract with EDC. To administer curriculum. So I'll stop there and I'll uh, you know, and Wesley's here also to be able to provide more details on what that looks like. And answer any question that the council may have.
Anything you want to add, Wesley?
No, I'm just here for, if you guys have any questions, uh good evening, Mayor and uh Deputy Baron, C D members. Um my name is Wesley Wen. Stop to the committee and to the board, to the council.
Is um the, the, this was, this can be from the Finance and Economic uh Committee uh just a week ago or whenever, January twenty fifth. Seems like it was yesterday. And uh the big, the, the question we had is that the first series is going to start here. Early February. Um can you give us update of how many people have signed up for this class that that will then be eligible for this? And sound like you guys have been doing some work behind the scenes.
We have to gauge interest and, and um so we're looking at having two cohorts uh throughout the year. The uh this immediate uh first quarter and then a second quarter later in spring. And each cohort being about fourteen to seventeen. And from early interest in, in work, we have about sixteen interested in taking this first cohort in February. Sixteen uh small business owners.
That's right around the corner. I know it's right, they're ready to go. Is that, is that a mixture of uh veterans and from the BIPOC community?
I don't have exactly a quick makeup. But Wesley, do you have a, a makeup of what the businesses look like?
Um all of them are minority-owned uh business owners or entrepreneurs. So um they, they are from, coming from underserved communities. Um and so that, that was one of the criteria to be selected into the, the training. So um EDC have indicated there's a lot of interest and they have um select sixteen, like Rick said. A participant for the program. And I think it's great that is starting this month coincide with the Black History Month. So I'm really um, I don't know by accident or whatever, but it seemed to uh fit well to what we're trying to uh buy to the community.
Absolutely. So with that, I, I make a motion that we authorize a budget amendment to re. Absolutely. So with that, I I make a motion that we authorize a budget amendment to real- reallocate the unspent funds from the twenty twenty-one.
Mayor, from a uh, council member Vasquez had a question.
Okay, well, let me get through my motion, then I'll you know, I'll get to your question. To authorize a budget amendment, okay, the uns- unspent funds from the twenty twenty-one scale-up contract to establish a BIPOC business start training program, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract, the Thurston E D C to manage the BIPOC training program. Is there a second?
Second.
Who didn't say you did? I council member Vasquez's questions.
Um, thank you, Wesley, for bringing this proposal forward. I don't know a lot about the scale-up program yet, but I wanted to find out if part of it is designed to help minority and women-owned businesses connect with the state office on W B E. Because I know that at the state level, the governor just put out an executive order of twenty-two oh one that encourages state agencies to work harder to use minority and women-owned businesses. And so that's like one more thing that is just in the atmosphere right now that makes this a good moment to divert these funds to do this. So serendipity.
Yeah, love that. You're you're absolutely right, council member. This is a great time. And I'm I'm sure the E D C is aware of that, right? And it's.
They are. They are. And and there's also several other programs that the E D C provides that uh, help with contracting for women and minority-owned businesses, as well as other business counseling and training and and uh, business launches. And they all kind of feather in with each other, so they complement versus, you know, being separate silos. So it is a a great little system that the E C has been developing. And then also with our interaction within the funding, specific Lacy initiatives too. It's been a great partnership.
Any other questions? Go ahead, councilor Stedman.
I would say anything that involves veterans is gonna um, check all those boxes, um, minority, um, you know, men or women, all all that. So um, I I have very little concerns when it comes to that.
Well, this is, this is really exciting, and um, it's a, it's a, you know, once you're tapped into the E D C program, there's so many other things that are are offered that, as a business owner who's been in this community for a long time, I wasn't aware of until I became an elected official and was our Lacy's representative to the E C. And I'm like, what? You have what available? And I I I've used them with my business on on several occasions. And it's amazing how many services they are offer out there at no cost. We're through a grant program. And so I I really appreciate the the work that we're doing specifically on on this um, initiative, the scale-up program. Because I I do think it is a priority for this council to to reach out and have a um, more equitable, you know, uh, community, especially for uh, our entrepreneurs out there. We're such a, we support our entrepreneurs so much in the city of Lacey. But we need to make sure we're supporting everyone. And so this is helping with that, and it uh, warms my heart. And I, you know, I just appreciate all the work that we're doing it on on our end, and the E D C as a partner is doing it on their end, you know, and the win-win for sure. Any other discussion? And all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone to post? And that motion unanimously carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, uh, council. And uh, we'll keep, one other thing too, is as we work through this program, we'll be coming back with updates on the cohort and and the success or results of the program. So we'll be bringing back some data as a report out of the effectiveness of the training.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I just have two other items report out on. As you know, Resolution ten sixty-seven provides for an interlocal agreement approval process. Any interlocal agreements under seventy or twenty-five thousand dollars, the city manager has uh, the ability to sign and then report back out to city council. So two interlocal agreements to report out on. One is with North Thurston Public Schools for a bus lease. This is anticipation for us to do day trips with our Parks and Rec program. Uh, that lease is under five thousand dollars for bus services. Um, that will end or expire at the end of the school year, so August thirty-first. So that was the first one. The second one is we've worked cooperatively with T COM nine-one-one. They needed to add some telecommunication equipment. And they used our water tower off of Forty-first and Marvin Road. So we worked out an agreement and a local agreement. Um, as part of that uh, agreement, they are no longer gonna charge us for T COM calls related to public works callouts. And uh, we are allowing them access to our facility. That agreement will expire in twenty twenty-six. So those are the two agreements as per our policy.
That's, sounds good all the way. Thank you. Okay, um, next up is boards, commissions and community reports. I'm up first, uh, but I do not have a report, so I'll go to the deputy mayor.
Uh, I do have uh, a couple of quick ones. Uh, the E C Board uh, did meet January twenty-sixth. What the the first agenda item is is uh, our uh, budget for for the E D C uh, identified were um, programs that generate net revenue. And uh, there were uh, at least ten of those. Um, and programs that do not generate net revenue, uh, but are deliverables uh, was the remaining amount, and that was eight of those. Uh, the the proposed budget for twenty twenty-two with a net income of eleven point four, uh, a total of uh, twelve point nine uh, with expenses just shy of that that number, uh, creating a a total net income of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the E C. So so the E D C is is uh, managing dollars well, uh, and with with the amount of programs that they put out. Uh, it's um, it it was a pretty good-looking budget. Uh, the the income uh, and the expenses are right in line with what they have been in in previous years. A little higher this year. The uh, next-gen item was was um, the uh, survey or actually the retreat uh, and the information that was gained from the retreat and the you know, having gone over the mission statements, the retreat was in October on the twenty-seventh. And I don't know that there's uh, there that there was a previous report out on this because the the information uh, just came in. But you know, having gone over the vision statement and the mission statement, uh, but the consultants identified some areas that uh, the E D C um, you know, for focusing and uh, things that we can do uh, to to better the community. Some of those areas uh, include housing homelessness, um, addressing the creative community. And uh, increasing regional cooperation was was a big one. Placemaking uh, and advocating for entrepreneurship, which we kind of have covered in some of this meeting so far. Uh, and that uh, is a big one. But in 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 the homelessness, uh, the 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 lead item was was, you know, continuing to to fund as much daycare as we possibly can uh, so that people can get to work. Uh, and then housing, you know, to uh, facilitate facilitate discussion, able jurisdictions to facilitate discussions, uh, communicate housing visions and coordinate discussion with owners. Uh, you know, as as we look at our housing market, you know, I know that you know, around this time of year, we we really come up short on housing. And you know, especially uh, you know, if in the real estate market of of buying and selling, not just renting. Uh, but you know, we 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 may have a a three-day supply, you know, of housing if if we're lucky uh, until the sun really comes out, and then we may bump up to a two-month supply. So a three-day supply is somewhere in the neighborhood of like two hundred, two hundred fifty houses. Uh, uh, in a, the average county has more of a a three, two to three and a half month supply. You know, it's averaging somewhere in eight hundred to fifteen hundred houses uh, that are on the market, you know. We, it it's it's almost like, you know, we we visit this this uh, item often in many different conversations in that um, you know, we're as a county, we're just, we're short on houses. Uh, and if we don't build some more, we're gonna continue to, you know, send people away to live in other communities. It looks like um, council member Vasquez wanted to chime in on the housing thing.
I just had a quick question. Why is it that the supply is so much lower in the winter months than it is in the summer?
Good question.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, in the in the winter months, uh, not everybody wants to. People typically wait until the the rain dries up to to list their house for sale, and council member Conkle can can speak about this. Uh, but you know, having an open house and having people, you know, walk through your house during holiday season uh, and having to get lost for four to six hours uh, becomes a, you know, a not worth it kind of a move for a lot of people wanting to list their homes. And so oftentimes, you know, houses in the Northwest don't get listed until the sun comes out.
Pictures look nice when the weather's nice.
Yeah, and so uh, the the uh, the housing market picks up as as the as the temperature rises is is basically how the how it works in the Northwest for the most part. Most of the people that 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 sell their homes in in the winter months are doing so because they have somewhere else to be or something has happened in their life that's forcing them to relocate. Uh, the uh, education uh, for future careers that may not exist. And and the um, the consultants uh, say that, you know, we need to consult with businesses and educators more than we currently do. The uh, some of the things that that, you know, the E D C is is tasking themselves with is, you know, building awareness of the impact and importance of what economic development is uh, so that the community more understands. Um, brand the organization as a home to critical thinking, strategic actions, and the bringer of resources. And to uh, work to ensure that the private and public partnership uh, has strong linkages. Um, create and implement a strategy for building cash reserves and endowment fund, analyze and take actions on activities that are not additive to the mission and act as catalyst for flexibility. And so how that's gonna be worked out, we're being to be seen. But uh, continue to build resources uh, that support local businesses. And one of the, one of the things that, you know, uh, one of the main directives is is to keep the money bouncing around in this community as opposed to sending it somewhere else, uh, which is, you know, oftentimes what happens when, you know, when you, when you are in a situation where you're trying to, you know, develop the the wants and needs of the community and incorporate them into your community as opposed to saying, hey, we don't have that here. Why don't you go to the next county over and get that? Uh, and then that money, you know, bounces around that community. Uh, and we don't really get to see the long-term benefits of those dollars. So uh, you know, we are a county of three hundred thousand people. We're not the largest county in the state of Washington by any stretch. Uh, and and, you know, in order to, you know, incorporate some more of the things that people want and need, uh, there's some future development that needs to happen is basically uh, what that boils down to. I also have a report on the, let's find it here, the Thurston Thrives. And the Thurston Thrives is going through kind of a reorganization. And uh, as opposed to, you know, having twenty-five members in one, one meeting, it's 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 gonna be broken up into some some smaller sections uh, that will uh, report to a smaller uh, council. So there will be an elected officials, um, you know, group. Uh, there will be, the housing action teams will meet and they will report. Uh, and so what I think the the new design is designed to to funnel all the information up through having the different um, sections of Thurston Thrives meet so that, um, you know, the executive committee and the and the elected officials committee can make the the necessary decisions as opposed to uh, the way it is now where we have, you know, twenty-five, thirty people in the meeting, uh, and and some are voting members, some are non-voting members, and so on. There, there was a a transportation meeting, uh, but I didn't see that on the agenda. So I can, I can, I can report out on that next time when I do see it on the agenda, if that, if that works for the council.
Yeah, that the transportation meeting will go on to the agenda when you report out, so we won't report out. That's under, that's under uh, yeah, uh, a different part of our, that's understanding general committees. So.
Okay, uh, well, then that is my report.
Great. Uh, coun- uh, councilor Cox.
Righty. I'll have one report tonight. The uh, the Lot Clean Water Alliance won't meet until next week on February ninth, and this Thurston Climate Mitigation Steering Committee meets on February twenty-eighth. So reporting on the Regional Housing Council meeting of January twenty-sixth, um, we received an update on what is known as the Scattered Site Project. And this involves support and supervision of a multi-, you know, multiple homeless encampments in in the northern county here. And the objective of this project is to establish some semblance of order and to work with the residents in there to prepare them for transition to a shelter, to transitional housing or permanent supportive housing when openings become available. But they're just, you know, there aren't enough spaces for everybody right now. So this is, this is a a means of trying to um, manage that group and give them support supportive services. Um, they're contracted with an organization called Olympia Mutual Aid Partners, or O L I M A P, to provide those services. The Funding Committee of of the Housing Council will meet this coming Monday. And we're preparing to issue requests for proposals for federal and state grant funds. Um, as has been the practice for the past few years, the grant applications will be reviewed by the council's technical team and the um, funding committee members, who will then recommend recipients and funding levels to the the full council. Ultimately, this goes on to Thurston County Commissioners for final adoption. This this will be a smaller thing this year because last year we approved um, two-year funding for these groups contingent on the funding being available. So this will be a um, not quite as involved this year in scoring those. And then uh, with the Thurston County Commission's recent adoption of the countywide home fund, we're looking at how this is going to affect and shape the regional housing council operations. Uh, for example, the the home fund revenue would allow us to hire a professional director, which I hope will take a little pressure off our staff and help facilitate the regional approach to addressing our housing crisis. And finally, we had officer elections, and I was elected as chair to succeed Olympia City Council Member Jim Cooper and County Commissioner Carolina Mejia is the uh, going to remain in the vice chair's role. Uh, by agreement, we have the cities get one office or the other, chair or vice chair, and the county gets the other office to ensure that balance. And for anybody interested in following the work of the Housing Council, you can find agendas, minutes, and other information on Thurston County's website. Just look for the link to the Regional Housing Council, and that's my report.
Thank you. Um, council member Stedman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one quick report. Uh, Community Action Council met on January twenty-sixth at five thirty. Um, relatively light agenda. Um, we approved uh, and then received grants of over six hundred thousand dollars from ranging from National Children's Alliance Grant to um, H H S Grants and stuff like that. They did report that, you know, um, um, of course, with COVID and uh, the early stages when um, none of us were at work, let alone our kids at school, that they're, you know, they're dealing with a bunch of big spike in um, sexual abuse cases involving children with Monarch. And um, you heard me talk about it in some reports earlier um, uh, in the year and leading up the over the course of COVID. So um, but the the good news is these children are getting help now. Um, and they're not alone. So uh, other than that, um, I think there was one other. If that was it with with um, Community Action Council, but I did want to say that um, today, February third, is National Women Physicians Day. And my uh, niece is getting ready to graduate as a physician in Yakima. Um, I think she graduates in the the beginning of May or into April, something like that. So that and National Pizza Day. So I don't know about you, but I like thirty days, and I like combination pizza. And politics can be fun sometimes if we try hard enough. So other than that, that that's my report and uh, look forward to our next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's also National Frozen Yogurt Day too. And if it's not, it should be, but I'm pretty sure.
That's fun.
Was that, was that yesterday? Or is it today? It's either today or it was yesterday, but um, that's it. Uh, council member Con.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two things before I get rolling here. Uh, we haven't seen a two-month supply of housing inventory in a few years. Uh, that's how critical our housing shortage.
Uh, that's how critical our housing shortage is right now. It is a very difficult time, uh, to be a home buyer in, in, uh, the state of Washington, at least in Western Washington. Sure Yakima and those areas are the same. And number two, pineapple goes on pizza. That's all I'm going to say.
I'm with you.
No, I, I do have reports. Uh, so Jazzcom, I, I did have my orientation earlier today. We will have our first official meeting on Monday, the seventh. And I also have the pleasure of touring, uh, the facility on Thursday prior to the council meeting. Looking forward to that. For Lacey South Sound Chamber, we had our annual business awards forum yesterday and that was a great time. Uh, some wonderful community minded people were deservingly recognized. And we have had even two of our own council members who are candidates for consideration of the Armed Forces Champion Award. Good job, Stedman. All the chambers, uh, customary meetings have resumed to be.
May I interrupt to, uh, Mr. Ed? Cause, uh, you know, you, you're every bit worthy of the recognition when it comes to that too, because you're right alongside, beside me. So.
And Stuart Ridgeway, who ended up, uh, winning the award very, very well deserved as well. So.
Very well deserved. And he was a humble spirit. Yeah, very humble spirit. His comments in, and that really resonated with me. I almost got choked up watching him. Uh, it says this award really should be split three ways and, uh, what an amazing guy, an amazing career that, that man has had. And to be able to serve. Be able to serve on the board with him, yeah, with, uh, with Gold Star Family Memorial. It's, it's an honor. Uh, great guy and well deserved. Uh, but it's been a great thing to see so much of our community begin to gather again. Uh, we have all of our chamber meetings and subcommittees that are meeting in person. Uh, since the governor's mandate from two years ago and it's good to see us, uh, get back to some degree of normalcy. And last but not least, we, uh, the SWAC, uh, committee met Wednesday. We are introduced to a new staff member, uh, Jihon Grittenberger. I hope I didn't mispronounce her name. Uh, who is now the Education and Outreach Specialist for Thurston County Waste. Uh, we reviewed the work plan for two thousand and twenty two and elected the new Chair of SWAC, which is Renee Sinclair. And our board approved, uh, gentleman by the name of David Nightingale, uh, to join the Board of County Commissioners Citizen Advisory Board. And that is my report.
And be, before we go to the council member Vasquez, uh, also want to just, uh, point out that, uh, yesterday I was asked by the chamber to give. Out the Legacy Award, um, which I was very honored to do. And it's been something I've been talking about with, with Rick and our staff is, uh, you know, we, we have businesses that have been a cornerstone of our community. For, since we incorporated, you know, been here for forty years, been here for, you know, thirty years. And, uh, the, the, the business that won that award was the Royal Norman Cosmetics. And, uh, she got started in nineteen seventy four and I know, I, I remember that because it's the year I was born. She's been doing in that business since I'd been born and, and she's obviously contributed a lot to the Lacey Chamber as well. That was very well deserved. The CDC, um, was, uh, another one who obviously, uh, we think the CDC is, uh, you know, South Sound Mall. And the late, uh, the Fred Meyer complex and everything. Obviously, uh, Bob Boom, uh, Bloom did to actually help. Establish us as a city of Lacey. So, um, that was a very good recognition. And the third one was.
I know all kids win.
No, that, no, on, for the, uh, Legacy Award.
There's the CDC, there's Royal Cosmetics. Yeah, it is Madeline White that won.
And then the flooring business off of, um.
Flooring, B and R flooring, yep.
Yeah, can't forget. Yeah, Garrett, Garson and, and his, uh, his sister who's been running that business, who's took over from their parents. Who've been, who I dealt with way back in the day. They didn't hear, you know, it, the other one that should qualify, I think it was Paulson's right next door, next door to B and R. And so there's, there's, we have a lot of businesses that have been around in this community for a long time. And I know we're working our own program. Scott, you have something?
Well, you just add, so the Lacey Makerspace also was up for the, the grit award, just, uh, for all the help they did during the pandemic.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a good one. There's a, it was a really great.
Making all the P P for, uh, in the initial stages of COVID where, you know.
Yep, John Gordon, there's, there was a lot of, uh, uh, well deserved recognitions, uh, for that last forum. And I'm, I'm just glad, glad to have been a part of it. So outstanding.
Anyway, I just want to add those couple of things because I've, I've been talking about recognizing our longstanding businesses for a long time. So it was really an honor to be able to give out that Legacy Award. With that, uh, council member Vasquez.
All right, that's such a report. Um, no, I don't. I'm excited to be able to give a report in the future. What I can report now is that we have, uh, the Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting tomorrow. That'll be my first one. We have Orca next Wednesday and Intercity Transit meets again on February sixteenth. So next time.
Next time we'll, we'll get the reports from you.
I'll have a report, yeah.
Well, we appreciate, well, that means we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all, council, for another great meeting. Really appreciate it. And, um, as always, keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned.